Michael, do we have anybody on Zoom?
In terms of council members, we have Councilman Seagrave with us.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Do you have a clock? Do you have a clock? I probably did, Dad. No, okay. Okay, so, oh, thank you. So according to Verizon, it is 12 o'clock. Welcome to the Cheyenne City Council Work Session Agenda in regards to the Cheyenne Regional Airport Updates. Just for some clarification, if you're in the audience, if you could please turn your phones to mute or vibrate. Also online, if you could please mute yourselves. As with all council work session, there is no public comment on this. We do have Councilman Seagrave on us virtually with Councilman Cook, Roybo, Rennie, Laborn, Aldrich, and White, as well as myself present in the room. Just for, at 12:30, I do have to go back to work. At that point, I will relinquish control of the meeting over to Chairman White. With that, Mr. Bradshaw, if you'd like to do your introduction, please.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to meet with each and every one of you to talk about the airport. We are Joint Powers Board, and so we, the city and the county are both sponsors for the airport. So we wanted to give you an update on some of the things that we're doing at the airport so you can have a better understanding. And we welcome any input or recommendations you have for us. I've got a few items on here, and I want to be respectful of your time, so please feel free to ask any questions, and I'll try to answer them. I do want to introduce Jennifer Nelson. Jennifer has been the best thing that's happened to this airport for a long time. We brought in our financial management, used to be third party, and we hired Jennifer to be our Director of Finance. And we've seen a real marked improvement on that. Oh, you've already seen the agenda, so. Okay, just again, some things you already know. The board has recognized a joint powers board, and the city and county review our airport budget as well as sign our FAA grant agreements with sponsors. It consists of five members, two appointed by the city, two by the county, and one that alternates between the city and the county. We operate both as an airport board under Wyoming State Statute, as a joint powers board, and hold ownership of all facilities, equipment, and leaseholds. We're very blessed to have five fantastic citizen volunteers on our board. They love their community, just like you do, and they want to see it grow and prosper. So we're very fortunate to have these individuals as part of our board. Also, the management team, you know me, of course. We have Cliff Cox, I've already introduced Jennifer. Mike Miller runs our fixed base operation, which is our private side of the airport over on Evans Avenue. I thought I'd start with the runway update, since that's had the most impact on not only the airport, but also the community as a whole. As you can see by this graph here, now Jennifer and I did not start this project. We inherited it, and we are going to finish it. So this is a multi-year project that was funded through FAA, through the Wyoming Department of Transportation, the National Guard Bureau as well. The biggest problems we had were in '21 and '22. We had a contractor that took two years to do a four-month project. And some of the pavement didn't really meet the standards, but it was decided by everyone, the guard, FAA, everyone, that these are edges of the runway that would cause more problems to tear them out. And plus, it would entail another construction season next year. So it was decided by everyone not to pay them for that pavement, leave those pavement in place. The contractor we have now is top-notch. They do a lot of work at DIA. We are scheduled to reopen the runway September 10th and resume our airline service with United Express at that time. So we're very happy to put this project in the rearview mirror. Sure, anything else I need? Any questions about the runway? I just want to kind of, I know I could say I think I've got to get back to work. Any questions about the runway project?
Councilman Seagrave, did you have anything since you're on Zoom? Anybody?
I actually had mine on first, but you can go, Pete, if you want.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Bradshaw, when we discussed this matter yesterday, you indicated that you'd be glad to take me or any other members of the council on a tour and review the situation on, actually, on the ground, since this is something we don't generally deal with, and certainly is a, I think you could say catastrophic mistakes were made here. So I hope that we can do that fairly soon, and I'd appreciate it. And I don't know if anyone else wants to do that, but it's, would certainly help me with my knowledge and what you just mentioned about the adjacent elements of the main runway, or some of the pieces I'd like to understand better. So I'll look forward to hearing from you and setting up some time to go out and look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Through you, Mr. President, Mr. Bradshaw. Jim, I guess I do have at least one question, though. You mentioned that, you know, the FAA and the military and everyone has sort of, you know, sounds like mutually decided, okay, look, we don't want to, but we're going to move forward with this the way it is. So I'm just curious, as far as any carriers you have now, any potential carriers that you may or may not have down the road for commercial air travel, what is the opinion of those groups? Now granted, it is, you know, they are, those are smaller planes, I do understand that. But, you know, as far as, you know, the people who may, you know, divert, you know, may have aircraft diverted here, you know, the bigger airplanes, I'm really just, you're just curious what the opinions are of the, your money makers, basically. You know, your commercial air service and, you know, the diversion, you make a lot of money from that. So do they share the same opinion that, yeah, it's not ideal, but we're okay with it?
To answer your question directly, we didn't seek their counsel on this, because there's so many carriers. We get a lot of carriers from Denver as well, too. But what the FAA and our consultants in the airport did was we reached out to the American Concrete Pavers Association, and they verified that this, the strength will be adequate enough. And as you know, concrete over time hardens. So to answer your question, no, we didn't seek counsel from the other air carriers. But the collective group of people felt like that this was the best move forward, because it would cause more destruction to pull out the concrete that's in there now. So again, with, with the backing of the American Concrete Pavers Association, who everybody holds in high regards, everyone felt like it should be left in place.
Does anybody else have any further questions before we move on to item three? Okay, seeing none, go ahead, sir.
Just a couple pictures here. These guys have been, done a terrific job of working seven days a week, holidays as well, getting it done. Of course, we've had an unusual year with the weather, as we all know, so. All right, I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer Nelson, please, just to kind of brief you on what our budget looks like this year, which is our plan going forward.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to do is just make everything very transparent. I know that that's been a struggle with the airport in the past, is it's kind of been a little confusing and hard to follow. So I thought this would be a great opportunity to just explain our revenue streams and our expenses, and kind of where, where we get all that information from. So we have two main enterprise centers at the airport. The administration and operations, and then the fixed base operations, as Tim mentioned, is our private side. And so we operate them almost entirely independently. We don't receive any tax dollars for our operations. We're not authorized to collect property tax or sales tax for that purpose. We are funded, our operations are funded through fees paid by our airport users, which includes airlines and businesses that rent and operate at the airport and on airport property. Some of the key community members are the Wyoming Air National Guard and the state of Wyoming. Those are our big renters, and we, and receive a lot of income from them. As you can see, this is our fiscal year 2024 budget. We are currently projected to have an operating loss of $171,000, which is significantly less than what we've had in the past. And we are making strides. This is a very conservative estimate, trying to take into account three months of lost revenue from the runway closure. So we really do anticipate breaking even or making money on operations, but it was just really hard to project that information. As far as the revenues concerned, our main source of revenue at this point is our lease space. We have approximately 70 leases with various tenants, like I mentioned, including YDOT, the Air National Guard, the city of Cheyenne, and the state of Wyoming, as well as various buildings, land rent, hangar rent, terminal rent, and storage rent. Our rental cars are also really picking up the slack this year. We implemented what's called a customer facility charge on the rental cars. So when you go and you get a rental car, there's a fee that gets attached to that, I think, is it $4 now? And that automatically will go back to be invested into rental car facilities at the airport. Currently, we're looking at using the money that we've started collecting on that to expand our parking lot, to have a rental car lot within that, to kind of take away parking spaces, or add the parking spaces, so it's not taking away from transport. And then we receive concessions and money from air carriers, such as the passenger facility charge. Again, that's tacked on to your plane ticket when you book that. And the, that money goes back into infrastructure, and it's, that is regulated, so we can't just use that money willy-nilly. As you can see, a little breakout here of our revenue and kind of the huge difference between how much that revenue comes from our lease spaces. And then as far as the expenses are concerned, we broke those into a couple of main categories. Obviously, the administration and operations, the airfield, lease space, the terminal, and the other buildings and ground expenses. I mean, you can kind of see that breakout here, and the majority of our expenses are in administration and operations, keeping up the airport and the lease space. And then our FBO, as I mentioned, is operated almost independently, and they're, they're really one of our big money makers. So we're budgeting an operating income with them of 303, and they, they do, you know, help subsidize the expenditures that come on the other side of the airport that we don't have a revenue source to cover. And then next up is our capital budget for fiscal year '24. This has been updated from the original copy that I think that you guys received, because we did rebid a couple of items and got some better pricing, so that was good. And I don't know, Tim, did you have anything else you wanted to add on this?
The FBO?
No, I'm fine.
The capital, just really the right-hand column, you can see that the airport, we have to provide matching funds for a lot of these projects here. And you can see the total down there at $3.2 million. That's money that we have to come up with, and I believe, I'm sorry, 2.8. That's old numbers I was looking at here. So again, this, this is the funds that we have to come up with. We have 40 buildings, 1,200 acres of land, and miles and miles of pavement that we have to take care of. So as you well know, running a city, it takes a lot of resources to pay for those expenses there. And the airport has been neglected for several years, and we're just trying to catch up now and keeping up with some of the infrastructure we have there.
And the airport does, thankfully, have reserves in place to be able to cover these capital expenditures that obviously we wouldn't be able to cover with our, our operating budget. And this, again, just kind of shows the, those capital projects, the main ones that we plan to undertake this year, and that funding stream. As you can see on the runway, the passenger boarding bridge and the snow removal equipment, the majority of that, 93%, is funded by the FAA. And then there's matching portions by the Wyoming Department of Transportation and the airport.
And if I may, I'd like to just draw attention to that, that fourth column, which is the terminal parking lot. We just got bid yesterday, which they came in much better this time around. We tried to take advantage of a good bidding environment, but things are really tough right now. Sixpenny raised $823,000. Somehow or another, we've got to come up with the gap, close that gap on some of these parking lot improvements there. Just the, if we could flip to the next slide. When we started looking at this project, we said, okay, we're going to do as much as we can for the, for the money that Sixpenny raised. And that would be the light blue area. The dark blue area is an area we'd like to do if we had the extra money. The green area is something that we, we're going to seal coat that, and that's an internal maintenance thing we're going to do. The orange exit road that we were hoping to put in, that's off the table, we just don't have the funds for. And Jennifer mentioned that we now charge rental cars $4 per car, and that's going to be paid for the purple lot. I wanted to bring you to see, I know this is kind of a sensitive issue with everyone, but we have to make up at least $200,000 in revenue just to do the light blue section of the, of the airport. And if we have to add 40 or 50 trees to that, that's going to drive the cost up tremendously. And we've offered alternatives such as sculptures, signs, boulders, other types of landscape materials that doesn't require a lot of work. And it's, it's not only the initial cost of putting the trees in, but it's also the ongoing maintenance. The feedback that we got when we were applying for this project is that we would have to water those trees in the wintertime. And we blow out our lines every year, like everyone else does. So we would have to get a, purchase a water truck to keep those trees alive. And that's what's happened to a lot of those trees there, they weren't properly irrigated. You know, our winters are harsh, the soil conditions are harsh here. So just would like to point it that out, that adding 40 trees to that project is really going to drive up the cost that we don't have the funds to purchase with that.
One moment. Did you have anything further? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, as long as we're, as long as we're on this subject, I think it's an important one, and one that deserves attention. I've been very disappointed over the years at the management that the airport board has done with the vegetation that they have, are responsible for. And I particularly point to there at the entrance to the terminal, coming off of Maury. Those trees that were planted there are all dead, are close to dead. They did have an irrigation system. And I think that it's very important that the airport board, as well as anyone else who has a site plan and agrees to responsibilities for vegetation, needs to fulfill that. So it's my understanding from my discussions with you, Mr. Bradshaw, that the airport board does not want to hire a landscape architect to come up with a zero-scape plan for that blue area or the green area either. Is that correct?
We're trying to keep the cost low, and hiring an architect is just going to add additional costs. Because we had one lady that we met with, with a, she's a local person, here's a landscape architect, and she quoted us a price of $200,000. And we just don't have those kinds of funds. I believe in working with our forestry.
For the design?
Sorry.
She quoted you a price of $200,000 for the design?
Yes, and for all, taking care of all the trees that we have, the issues that we have with it. So we'd like to work with the urban forestry department, and we've come up with a list of species that are native to Wyoming, that don't attract wildlife, that doesn't cause an obstruction, they don't get the high heights. So we would just ask for some flexibility in meeting the requirement as much as we can without putting in an extra burden on us of cost that we just really can't afford right now. So again, we'd like to, we want to plant low-riding juniper bushes, some native grasses, things like that in there. But we don't want to put trees in there that require a lot of maintenance and require watering year-round, which we can't do. And I apologize for what happened before I got here, and we're doing everything we can now to take care of the trees. Along Airport Parkway, there's probably 30 trees that have perished along Airport Parkway. But I look around town, and I see a lot of trees that are dying around town. It's a very difficult environment, the trees here. But again, we just ask for flexibility in trying to work out a, a solution that's affordable and feasible.
Well, I hope that that can be done. I think that it's going to take the expertise of people who really understand those issues. And you're quite correct that with climate change, things have really deteriorated in our urban forestries. But my point is that certainly with the upcoming walkway or jetway that is displayed there, it's another element of having Cheyenne have a really high-quality terminal and an experience for our guests to come into the community and see that it's the kind of place that they are impressed with. So it's my opinion that that terminal is very attractive, and that the parking lot needs to be managed the best it can be without shorting the elements that we demand of others in the site plan programs that we have. So that's, I just really want to emphasize that to the members of the council, that when our guests come into the airport terminal and leave and get out in their vehicle, hopefully, it'll have that atmosphere, and we will come to a better understanding about those responsibilities, because I believe it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Scott, did, I know your mic was on, did you have anything further? Okay, Dr. Aldrich, please.
President Johnson, through you. I had several questions about the, as we went through the budget. Can you explain, the first one is, can you explain what the badging fee is?
So we charge, I don't, I don't even know how much, it's like $20, I think, for an initial badge. So for security purposes, they have to go through a background check to get a security badge. For example, the people who have airplanes who are in the T-hangers, and they have to have a badge to be able to have access. And that background check is done, I think, daily, so that any security alerts would pop up on our records so that we could address them timely. And so those badging fees are to help cover those costs.
Okay, and then I noticed that there was funding set aside to do the post office parking lot, and I commonly use that post office, for a post office box that we have there. And I've noticed that the front areas, or, I'm sorry, the area to, between the old terminal and the really old terminal has been done. But the, around the post office is horrific. I mean, the potholes and things are just atrocious. And so is that what you, you have budgeted for the, when you say post office parking lot, it's the, around the post office and around, back by the drive-through mailboxes?
Yes, so last year, we seal coated the old terminal lot. It was in decent enough shape. If we can get seal coat down, it protects the pavement for a lot longer. So we didn't repave that section, all we did was put seal coat down. But the area around the post office, very, very busy post office, has been in total disrepair. It's been neglected for decades. It should have been addressed years ago. If you stay on top of the maintenance, which we're trying to do now, and everything we're doing, they, they let it go. So it needs a total reconstruction all the way around the building. It's unfortunate, and we've got to come up with the funds for it. So that's, that's our plan, is, but we've, we've got, we've awarded the bid. Hopefully, this project will be done. I don't think it'll make it before the frontier days, but hopefully, it'll be done before the winter sets in.
Okay, and then I also had a question. You mentioned that you've collected $823,361 in Sixpenny sales tax, or that that's what you're, I was confused with, is that what you've collected so far? And do you anticipate more will be collected?
I'm not really sure how that process works. This is all new to me. But this was the projections that we had, is based on the collections. But I don't really know the answer, if it can go higher, if it can go lower.
I can kind of explain that. So what was approved on the Sixpenny ballot was $823,000-ish. As you can see on this screen, there's, in that other funds column, there's $415,000. That's based on our current, like, what we've been collecting monthly. I projected in that first, this first year, we'll receive $415,000 towards that. My understanding is the Sixpenny money is well, it's collecting well, and we're getting it a lot faster than we thought. And normally, we wouldn't collect, we wouldn't get more than that, because that's not what was approved by the voters. I guess there is a little bit, like, shutting it off, a little bit of money that might be available, but not very much.
Okay, and then the last question I had or comment was that, I have to agree with my colleague from Ward 1, that, you know, I really do see the airport, if we want people to use that terminal regularly, it really is kind of the gateway to our community, knowing that it's in the center of town, which is just weird in itself. But the airport Parkway, I know that you have a lot of your real estate holdings along that. And quite honestly, it's not uncommon for us to receive complaints by residents in that neighborhood about how poorly that is kept, whether it's the dandelions, which I think, you know, probably if you could harvest those, you could make a ton of money along Airport Parkway. But that's, we get complaints regularly from residents in that neighborhood about how poorly the airport lands are kept and maintained. And so I, I understand the challenge with landscaping in Cheyenne and in Wyoming in general, and the need for some flexibility with zero-scaping. I would hope that, you know, you might reach out to Master Gardeners, you might reach out to BLPU, maybe you can be a demonstration site for zero-scaping. But something's got to be done, because it looks horrific, quite honestly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did Councilman Seagrave have a comment? Go ahead, sir, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. How did we come up with the $800,000 number for the parking lot? I mean, if it's $2 million to do it, why did, why did we put 800,000 on the ballot? Can you help me with that, please?
All right, go ahead, sir.
Okay, one of the things about me that some people don't like is I'm very direct. But I was told that the reason it was low bid, a low number, was because they wanted to make sure it got, the ballot got passed. So that's the information relayed to me. I was not part of that discussion, so I have no idea. We all know bid prices have gone crazy here lately, but the engineers told them it was way underestimated for the price project anyway. So I'm just being honest with you.
Councilman Seagrave, did you have, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bradshaw, have you spoken with the mayor or commissioner, head of the commission, to see if there's potentially any ARPA funds that might be left over for this project?
No, sir, but I'll certainly look into it.
I, I would, I would appreciate that. I don't know what the county commissioners have. We, we may or may not have a little bit of money left, but I, I certainly would be interested in making sure this project is completed properly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing as how it's about two minutes before, and we're at a segue unless you had any follow-ups on your budget through Jennifer or you, before we move on to item four?
Just the last thing here, the airport master plan. We would like to have city participate in that master plan project. We're going to map out what the airport's going to look like over the next five, 10, 20 years. We'll be putting that out there.
Okay, very good. So at this point, I will go ahead and turn this over to Councilman White.
Thank you, President Johnson. Any other questions from council members regarding the budget? I just wanted to make one quick comment that, I don't know if Mr. Roybo and Mr. Laborn got the same email I got, but we, I had a constituent contact me thinking that all of those trees on Airport Parkway were city property. And so she was chastising us, the city, for not taking care of those. And so I had to point, had to clarify that those don't belong to the city, those belong to the airport. And she made a good suggestion about maybe some shrubbery, or something that was perhaps more resistant to, to our harsh climate, which I actually thought was good. So I'm passing along those comments to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
There are no other questions on the budget. We will go to item number four, which is upcoming projects.
Okay, that is the liquor. Did I miss something? Oh, that's, okay. Okay, first of all, I'd like to offer an apology to you and other members of the council, because I misspoke about an issue regarding this airport liquor license application. During the public hearing, the question was asked, sorry. I want to apologize for, I misspoke about a statement regarding the license. In the public hearing, the question was asked of me, is it legal for us to, and I'm paraphrasing, to lease the license? That was the question that was posed during the public hearing. And I misspoke and said- And I misspoke and said that the Attorney General has reviewed this and stated that that's the case. Well, I was going off of information that I was misinformed. When we were originally applying for this liquor license, we were looking to put it on Del Range. And the question came up about leasing the license for a possible liquor store on Del Range. I was told by our council that the Attorney General looked at this and said that we could. And I went by that information.
You were told by your legal counsel, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
So then the public hearing comes, and I misspoke. I did not realize until Monday afternoon, after the Finance Committee meeting, that apparently what took place was the Liquor Division, again, this is all, I don't have firsthand knowledge of this. The conversation took place between the Liquor Division and the Attorney General about that issue. But there's, if there's a document, I don't have access to that because that's, that's between those two agencies, so I don't have the information. So again, I want to apologize because I was misinformed. I was told that the Attorney General had stated that and that there was proof of that. So again, my apologies for that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I know, again, I just want to be respectful of your time here. You know, I understand that this is a very difficult decision for you to face. This is not something you deal with every day. This was something that was handed to us last year. When I first got here, they said that the airport was going to receive a retail liquor license. I had no idea what to do with it, had no idea, until I quickly learned, because there was a license that came up with you guys shortly thereafter, and like 11 entities put in for that license. And I quickly realized it has a tremendous value to it. So we wanted to use this license to, as an economic development in our toolbox, because we're basically landlords. We have 70 businesses that we, we have O'Reilly's, we have Culvers, we have many businesses that were meant from us as well, too. So we saw this as an opportunity to really restore an iconic landmark. Many of you have spent many times, I'm sure, in that building, either flying out of there or visiting with the Cloud Nine Restaurant. So we saw this as an opportunity to reinvest and revitalize this building because it needs work. These buildings cannot sit for very long. And so we wanted to use this to attract a local investor. We could, this doesn't take a license out of the quota that we have for the city. It actually puts another one back into the quota, and we could partner. It's exempt from the quota that you have. So in essence, you're getting another liquor license with this proposal here. This will create jobs, it'll create a destination, place for people to come during the legislative session, they could hold events there. We party with the Arts and Historical there as well, too. So we see this as a tool to meet the development of that facility. Now, there's a legal question, and I do want to ask a question. Has there been any other correspondence between the Liquor Division and the City Clerk's Office since we last spoke?
We have our city clerk here, Ms. Jones. Do you want to comment on that? Go ahead. Showed up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Jones, City Clerk. I did receive a correspondence from Tom Montoya with the Wyoming Liquor Division yesterday, which was forwarded on to all of you and including the mayor. And you want me to read it into the record? It is fairly short, Mr. Chair.
Please. Yeah, I read it, it is short, so yes, go ahead and read it into the record.
Dated yesterday, June 22nd. After review of the materials presented to the Wyoming Liquor Division by legal counsel of the Cheyenne Airport Board, it has been determined that the application can now be certified as complete. We recommend that the hearing be held as scheduled, which we already had that public hearing, just as a note, and the city council can approve or deny the application. If the application is approved, issuance should be conditioned on the regular inspections conducted by the city prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy. But I would also recommend that a schedule of some sort be put on the file of the charter flights in and out of the historical airport terminal. Of course, they recognize that there is a major construction project on the runway at the Cheyenne Airport, and there should be an allowance for that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, as well, too, and thank you, Members of Council. So, you know, this was a big question that all of you were facing, whether we meet the legal requirements of the application. So again, we're just asking you to approve the application. We will work with the Liquor Division to make sure that we keep a manifest of the flights that come in and out of that facility, once we're back to full operation here. But again, I just feel like this is a really unique opportunity for us to move this community forward, and we'd ask you to positively, I mean, you know, approve our application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Questions for Mr. Bradshaw concerning this item? Dr. Aldridge?
Thank you, Chairman White. I just have a couple of questions. So I just want to be clear that when you said you misspoke, was it misspeaking about not being able to lease the license? Or was it misspeaking about being able to use this license at the old terminal?
The question, as I recall from the public hearing, was about leasing the license, because no opinion was ever sought for using the building that we have. There was not a, this was, the opinion that we, I thought we had from the Attorney General was regarding the leasing of the license, so there was nothing, any discussion about that. But we looked at the facility, we do continue to use it for flights, and we felt that that meets the letter of the law.
So the third-party lease was what was not allowable?
No, it is allowable. It says right in the statute that we can, we, that was part of the intent of the legislature is that they can lease this out to entities operating at the airport. So we don't have anything in writing, no.
Okay. So, because I'm still a little bit unclear about that, because it, you talked about wanting to put a, that you had been approached about, or thought about putting it out on Del Range, and then found out that that was something that you couldn't do, or is that, I'm a little lost in the he said, he said.
Sure. Yep. So originally, we were looking to do Del Range, and then the question came out about it not being in the airport terminal. And actually, the legislature law changes July 1st. So we knew that that issue wasn't going to go further because it was just not.
In the terminal.
We knew that after the legislature passed the bill in February, that we could not do that location. So that's why we backed off of that proposal there. And when we did have the proposal out on the street, we had two or three serious proposers who were interested in pursuing this license.
My next question is, is there, and I have, I have to say, I have not looked at the statute, and maybe Stephanie can tell us this, but in the statute for, in FAA regulations, is there a clear definition of what a terminal is? Or, because I'm, I guess, oh, thank you for putting that up. I'm guessing that that terminal is meant to be the one where persons engaged in commercial air travel, transfer on and off aircraft. But I'm understanding that this will be primarily charters and weather delays, if I read the information correctly.
It could be anything. We do football charters and gambling charters out there as well, too. We do diversions, but we also have air cargo that operates out there as well, too. So it's a multitude. Any aircraft used for hire is considered commercial air travel. So we meet that definition on that. So that's, that's the intent, is to continue to use the facility for that. As you well know, buildings have to be operated and lived in, and if we don't do that, we're going to have more problems with the facility. So our intent is to continue to use it as a terminal.
Just a follow-up question.
Go ahead, Dr. Aldridge.
I'm just curious as to, and maybe this means, question goes back to the author of the legislation, but I'm just curious as to if there is a number of flights, because it says in the documentation that Ms. Jones read, that we should be following up on the flights at that terminal if we decide to issue that license. And I'm just wondering, what would be that magic number that we would be looking at for it to be considered an active terminal? I mean, I don't know. I don't know enough about airlines to know, but maybe Dr. Rennie or President White, or President Johnson or someone else knows, what would be the magic number?
Mr. Bradshaw, do you want to try to comment on that?
If I may, please.
I don't know that there is a quote "magic number," like some type of borderline number that, that says, okay, now you're qualified commercial airport, but go ahead.
We'll certainly keep a record. In this type of business, there's scheduled service, which you're very familiar with. We know that flights leaves at this time. These are on-demand air charter. We'll get a call two weeks before Wyoming Football contacted to say, we've got a charter coming out of the airport. So it's more like an Uber, like it's on-demand, there's no scheduled service for it. But again, we will keep extensive records to make sure that we're continuing to meet the record, meet the law.
So, Chairman White, through you, so if there were a quarter, or maybe two because of weather, where you had no charters, I guess my question then would become, at what risk are we taking as a body to have granted this license and then go for three months or six months or nine months with nothing landing there? So that's, I just, that's an unanswered question, I'm sure, but something to think about.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from council?
Well, go ahead, and go ahead, let Ms., the other gentleman first.
We'll go to Mr. Laborne, then Mr. Cook, and then Dr. Rennie. Go ahead, Mr. Laborne.
Thank you. Well, it's certainly exciting to see these representations and to know that Art Cheyenne and the Airport Board have worked on what many people, including me and the community, see as important, which is bringing life back to that very unique and important building. To do that, I'm very curious about how that could possibly happen in the timeline that we have of, as I understand, of necessity, that we would, if we granted the license, obviously, it would not be operational until that building was restored and these wonderful things happened. But you can't park that license for more than two years. So how do you conceive of keeping that license active and following through on the funding mechanism of those many millions?
Thank you, Mr. Laborne. So if we're successful and the council agrees with our plan moving forward, we will immediately begin the RFP process to bring in a community partner to be the anchor tenant in that building. So this will happen, this will not take two years, we will immediately begin. We've already started some of the design process for the building. The Arts Council got the one grant, and they're applying for another grant. So I don't intend, I move fast, I don't wait for things to happen. So my intent is to immediately, if we're successful, to move forward with an RFP and get this out on the street as soon as possible.
Well, I guess we'll see if that's the case. It also seems to me that a restaurant license would also be a possible application here, and that, I do understand that within that limited space, there are a lot of ambitions and funds, but it certainly is a very important and worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborne. Mr. Cook?
So, Mr. Bradshaw, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if we can go back to the last slide or not. Jennifer, if, yeah, thank you. So I'm still getting hung up on whether we qualify or not. I mean, I realize you guys are saying that we do, but I'm wondering, I'm just, I was just trying to read this a little bit. I mean, obviously, cargo flights, there's no, there's no passengers getting, getting on and off of those. Diversion flights typically, again, those people don't deplane here typically. So do the sporadic charters that we schedule, does that meet, I mean, I realize we've talked about, you know, meeting, meeting the threshold of people coming in and out, because that, my understanding is, don't we have to deplane a certain amount of people at that building for it to be considered an active terminal?
It's just, my understanding is that if it's commercial air travel operating in and out of that terminal, and there's different levels of charter flights, Part 135, Part 121, and I actually sent some information to Mr. Johnson, kind of clarifying that point a little bit. When we do charters, you know, we would set up the screening process, some of the, if it's 60 seats or less, it doesn't require as much screening because you're not going into a sterile area like you are in Denver. So it's, it's looking at the operations that we have coming in and out of there, it would meet requirement. I don't know if I answered your question correctly.
I mean, you guys seem to, seem to be, I mean, I'll just have to, I'll just have to take your word for it, you know? I'm just, I'm just skeptical about it, you know? But I've taught you about that before, so I mean, I just, I hope that, I hope you're right.
Sure. And, you know, it's been a strange last couple of years because we haven't had the runway completely finished. We've missed a lot of opportunities, like diversions and charters based on that, but we're hoping that once we get this runway finished, we'll be back to the way we used to be. And years ago, they used to do averages of 70 diversions a year.
I think Dr. Rennie was next in line, and then I see Mr. Royble has a question, and I'll get to you for a follow-up, Mr. Laborne. Go ahead, Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Chairman, I was just looking at the, kind of the conceptual plan. I had a couple of questions on that. One, I noticed on the southeast corner, you had legendary service. Or is the long-term plan to move the FBO over to there?
It'll work in conjunction with it, because we could handle charters out of that operation there, and then the regular corporate jets and the private airplanes could be handled out of the other building.
Okay. I also wanted to note that with the Cloud Nine Restaurant, you guys are wanting to get rid of the old TSA.
Modular units.
And offices, and they would give it away, so.
Yes.
If any of you know, you know, know someone or organization or somebody that could use a modular, it's available. Also, President Johnson asked, and I understand this is just conceptual, but President Johnson had asked questions about how do you handle security if you do have a diversion where people get off the plane or, and is there, not having ever taken a charter, other than a six-seater, is there a security provisions that are required for charters?
Without digging too far into the weeds on some of this stuff here, and I'll be more than happy to share with you the information I sent to Mr. Johnson, if the aircraft comes in, the pilot in command has control of the aircraft, and they can make the decision what they want to do, there is a three-hour limit that you're supposed to adhere to.
Correct.
So at the end of, at that three hours, and this happened to us last year when we had those 13 diversions, the pilot command can offer to the customers that they can deplane the airplane if they want to. And if they do, that's, they're on their own, they're done with the airline at that point. If they do decide to deplane, then, and they want to re- inplane, typically, what a lot happens, happens with diversions is, it's getting late, people want to get home, they'll put them on the bus and take them to Denver. So there wouldn't be a rescreening at that point unless they wanted to rescreen and go back on the airplane, then we would bus the passengers over to the new terminal and put them through the TSA screening process on there. But there are some operators, like the one, the Part 135 operators and the charter flights, they don't require as much extensive screening as it does, because again, they're not going into Denver's sterile area. They're going from one fixed-based operator to another, they're not transferring into the terminal. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. It seems we're kind of hung up on whether they would be eligible to employ the retail license that was provided by the legislature. It seems to me, and I'm sure our attorney will address it at some point, if we issue the license, and then it's determined that it can't be used, or we're not meeting the provisions of the statute, it seems to me they would then have to, at least in that location, continue on with a bar and grill or a restaurant license. And, I mean, the worst-case scenario to me is they're told, no, you got to move it back to the new terminal, and you guys have to then operate with bar and grill or restaurant license. So I think we're raising a specter that maybe is not necessary.
Thank you, Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royble?
Just as a follow-up to my colleague here, with regular liquor license that the city employs, or enjoys or employs, once we issue the license, then the person that has the license can, do I use the word sell, or send the license to another place? With the airport license, is that you guys, it's your fixed operations license, and so you can't, the guy that's leasing it today can't lease it to someone else?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. I'm getting a no back there also, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Laborne, you had a follow-up question?
Yes, I note that President Johnson had to leave, but I did see in his email, he had some very specific questions based on, I think... had some very specific questions based on, I think, his prior experience in that industry. And I wondered if they'd all been answered.
Yes, sir. I responded to Mr. Johnson directly. I don't usually hit reply all because it becomes an open meeting, an open, open, it's a quorum then at that time when you hit reply all. At least that's what I'm used to in other states that I've worked in. So I typically don't reply all, but I'll be more than happy to share with you individually my responses to his questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborn. Does Mr. Seagrave have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seagrave. Any further comments from you, Mr. Bradshaw? Any comments or questions from members of the council? Mr. Laborn?
Thank you. Mr. Bradshaw, I drive up Evans Avenue multiple times every day, and I'm believing that it's probably best to either repair or remove the existing electronic sign there on, at the curve. It hasn't worked in years. And furthermore, it says that this is a regional airport in Jerry Olson Field. And recalling the efforts to upgrade the attractiveness of the airport and the efforts that Jerry made, I think it really doesn't, it makes me wonder what kind of maintenance and what kind of attention is going on, because that is something that was there for a purpose. Maybe it doesn't work anymore, but I think it is like a number of things that, and I appreciate your efforts to move the airport forward, but that's one thing that catches my eye every time I go by, so maybe we could either fix it or remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborn. I, it's a good point. I don't remember, I can't remember the last time that sign did work. I remember it worked once. It's the, it's the sign on Evans as you drive to the old terminal, as you're going north. It's, it's right there on the old buildings, and it has an electronic scroll, like words used to scroll down, like a banner sign. Dr. Aldridge?
Chairman White, through you. I just wanted to say, I did have the opportunity to tour the old terminal building yesterday with Mr. Bradshaw, and I think that it is a landmark in our community, it is a community gem, or could be, if it were renovated. I would love to see us be able to do something. I'm excited about the plans and the planned usage that I saw, and I'm excited about the possibility of having a real focal point there in the middle of our community that can draw and attract people. I think, obviously, the challenge will be the liquor license, but I was really glad that my colleague from Ward Two brought up the fact that we can always backtrack to less than a full retail liquor license. And there has been a, a bar and grill license, I believe it is, is it a bar and grill over at Billy Jack's? Yeah. That it could be flipped with the, with this license, if necessary. So would, hope that we can figure out a way to make this work and to get some funding behind it and make it into what it really has a potential to be.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. If there is no further comment from you, Mr. Bradshaw, or any further questions from council, we will adjourn this work. Oh, oh, yes, for upcoming events, and this was in some packets that we received, there is a 5K on the runway event, which will benefit the Rise Foundation of Wyoming, and that will be Saturday, August 26th, from 1:00 to 4:00. I'm actually kind of looking forward to that. I've never been able to run on a runway before, so I'm going to take advantage of it while I can. If there is no further information or comments, we will adjourn this work session and will be at the, this item will be discussed at the meeting of the full governing body on Monday night at 6:00 PM. Thanks. Have a good weekend.
Jeff?